Workshop. Commissioner Moore. And actually, we would please leave us. A presentation. Please stand if you're able.
This is not here. The heavenly Father, once again, we want to thank you for allowing us to come together. We thank you for you woke us up this morning, closing our rotten eyes. We give you praise for that on today. And we ask that you view us today as we make decisions, help us to make those correct decisions. Help us to agree and disagree with unity and love. And Father God, we ask that you bless all of those that are not here today who desire to be here. Give them a chance, once again, oh God. We ask that you bless everyone that's in attendance today. Give us courage and understanding to be reduced as well. For every prayer of name, all these prayers to be asked, and that's from Jesus.
Amen. I'm in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which is theirs. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and I'm changing you. Today's date is the July twenty first, twenty twenty five. We're starting off with a workshop. It can have a bold call, now it's first. Commissioner Murphy. Here. Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Lori.
Present.
Commissioner DeVito.
Present.
Mayor Myers.
Present.
City Manager Derek Martin.
Here.
We have Christina. Oh, I'm sorry. Assistant City Manager Christina Lori.
Present.
Okay, and Steve is still making a couple of copies, some last minute copies he's trying to get to us. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. So this workshop today is to talk about a proposed budget and where we're going to be on our knowledge. Because we have to set the maximums before the August fourth deadline. So Derek, are you ready to?
Sure, would you like to start at the top?
At the top.
We can go bottom line, that may be a little faster. Of course, we've gone through the budget, each individual line item. We have gone in and discussed in detail with each one of the division, the department directors. We have cut a lot out of this budget for this year. We've had a couple of issues on and off with the county with some of the spreadsheets and some of the calculations and worked through some of those problems and issues. As you can see, based on the county spreadsheet, the current ad-hoc form tax that we're budgeting this year is one million ninety nine dollars, four hundred and forty two dollars. That is at an eight point seven one six four percent. I believe the rollback rate, and I, and we also have some other spreadsheets coming, rollback rate was eight point four, what was the?
No.
Last year really eight point forty four.
But to hit the rollback rate this year.
Correct.
There is a different percentage.
Correct.
In order to hit that rollback rate. And that's what he should be bringing to everybody so they can.
He's gonna be bringing that spreadsheet.
So that they can see, which is the eight point seven. Comes at the eight point seven.
Eight point seven one six four.
Sorry, what is eight point seven one six four? What is that?
The millage rate.
That's our.
That, that is a rate, that is based on this year's four twenty, D R four twenty. That was provided from the county.
Okay. May I ask a question?
Sure.
So where are you getting the figures for our, for our ad-hoc form tax? And how does that compare to twenty twenty five, our actuals? Is it on this?
It is not on that. So what you have in front of you right now is the actual annual budget in long form. Steve is printing those out and he is coming on his way with the spreadsheet and to show you the deltas, the differences between this year and twenty twenty five. And how we came up with the eight point seven one six four with the D R four twenty. We had a couple of last minute changes and I apologize, but he's, he's working through that and he's gonna bring those spreadsheets for you.
Okay, may I inform that I don't understand this, why is our mileage going up? Well, the, the, um. The explanation that we have been given, of course, is, and it does fall on us, so all in all, based on what the property appraiser has told us, that this year, while we've had it a difference in the past, a higher in the past, this year is a one point forty four four percent increase in valuation. We did, it, it appears, while they haven't confirmed, that the F P L, back in twenty twenty three, the F P L overestimated. As to overestimate. On their T P Ps, on their T P Ps, which is their tangible personal properties. Okay, so they overestimated, they overpaid. Last year, they came back to the county and said that they had done that, resubmitted, but rather than the county giving them a all in one refund, they spread it out. Last year, it looks like there was some higher valuations that came in from the county on properties. So it wasn't felt. So it really wasn't plot to anybody's attention that this happened. This year, however, is not the case.
Yeah, this year compared to last year was sixteen point oh eight on real property. This year has been reduced down to six point two five. And, and you also have a sixteen, negative sixteen point seven eight on reduction on tangible property tax this year. And the year before, you had it at twenty seven point three one, and that's the two year drop that the mayor's talking about. Instead of giving us one flat time fee, they spread it out as a courtesy.
So, um, all in all, after, I guess, looking at all of this, this year is going to be a fair balance.
Yes, it is.
It is gonna be a fair balance. Steve should be bringing everyone the, is he bringing the D R four twenties?
He is.
He has the copies of those.
Yes.
Because a lot of current one, you know, so.
He's gonna bring them.
Everybody has that, so they have what their minor role just, you know, based on that.
I just have a quick question, now how is this affecting the county overall?
They're, they're, wait, they're basically, it's that six percent increase valuation, they're basically at like point zero five percent.
No, no, they're by, um, they're two, I think they're now at, they are now at two percent. They had, they had different that came in, they were at flat, they were flat. There were some new calculations that did come in.
They're at two point one one percent.
Yeah, they're at two point one one percent, or we're at one point four four percent.
Correct.
And, and the school district as well, it's, it's affected our school district, but with the school district, it's my understanding that the state can help supplement some of that, some of that shortfall. And so hopefully, they'll be looking to the state for that. But we don't have that, we don't have that luxury here, we've got to find it within our own budgets. So as we start to go through these budgets, we're gonna have to, really, cut back, not believe Derek and, Derek, you and Steve have given us a balanced budget, correct?
We have.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And when Steve gets here, can you find out, I know he's doing adjustments to C R A, but if he's, if he's on his way.
Do you want me to go get him? Go get him, he's waiting. Mayor, somehow, I'm still missing the part in the middle. So F P L's overpayment, how is that affecting our ad-hoc form tax valuation?
Because T P P goes into our ad-hoc form tax valuation.
So it's way, it's way down.
So it's way down.
We, we, our valuation of our properties, I'm, I'm just like, you know.
We're at six, what are, what is our property values gone at? So you typically.
Six point two five.
So typically, and we all know this, so typically on, on homesteaded properties. But, let me, let me just, let me finish my, my thinking, one, one person at a time here, guys. So typically, by Florida statute, on homesteaded properties, the, the county can go up that three percent on homesteaded property, on our valuation, okay? On non-homesteaded commercial properties, they have a ten percent that they can go up. So typically, you would have at least that three percent increase, okay? In our valuation this year, we're at six point.
Two five.
Two five, six point two five percent increase. But our T P P is down negative sixteen point seventy eight.
Correct.
And so, all in all, so that takes away from our, that's gonna take away from our real property.
Wait, you're saying those numbers, can you say percent? Because I didn't even realize you guys were talking about percentages right now, I'm sorry. So you need to say percent so that everyone understands. It's down to six percent.
Okay, I would think, everybody, okay, that's fine, thank you, I'll, I'll do that. So anyway, so while we're up in our valuation, six point two two five percent, our T P P is taking a big hit. And so those two numbers combined are how they get our, our, our valuation.
This is my first time going through this with you all, I know that we went through each individual line item with the directors. I don't know how this committee, or I'm sorry, this commission wants to go through these items specific. If there are questions, if you want to start from the top and go through each one, I can tell you that what Steve and I did was we looked at the adopted budget for twenty twenty five. And we also looked at what our actuals were through the amended budget and then our year to date actuals. And we did prorate some of those in a projection for twenty twenty five. Now, if the number, based on what it was, was higher or lower, we tended to go with the lower number and try to match what we originally had for the amended budget. And what was, what was on, 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 on the paper for last year. So again, it is very bare bones, trying to make sure that we facilitate the needs of the city for the residents. But again, being where we are with the numbers, it's very, very tight.
Well, to clarify, on this spreadsheet, the yellow column, the dollar increase, decrease, is from the budgeted amount for twenty twenty six and the amended budget for twenty twenty five, so.
It would be.
Well, I, I have to.
But, yeah, it's a difference between the twenty twenty five adopted budget.
Amended budget.
We never amended our budget twenty twenty five. Um, did we, um, we never did, we did not do a budget adjustment.
I don't believe so, and I.
We never did.
We never did.
We never, yes.
So this is off of the adopt, of the adopted budget.
We took the money, the rollover money that they said we had and we added it in, and we did add it in there. So it would be that, it could be that and put it into a miscellaneous, so we never had an actual.
It was in, in January.
No, it was.
Back to the end of the school year.
When?
Well, the numbers are the same on here, it looks like for all, I don't know why we have an amended column.
Right.
But the numbers are the same.
So, okay, so some of us have corrected. We, we had to adopt something in order to spend the rollover.
We did, we took that in, but we did not.
We did take that in.
We, we brought that in and put it into the budget. Christina, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and I had asked the same question, I believe the reason the amended budget line item in here is, is it was a placeholder for what that was going to be, but it never happened. So again, we just, the math is.
We didn't do the formalities.
Correct.
So what we did is we talked about it, we agreed to take that money and put it into the salary dollars and to the, but we never came in and acted this an ordinance. We kept putting that off. Christina, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I beg your attention, please.
This is my question.
Yes.
We can't spend it unless we do the ordinance, is that right?
Right.
So have we spent the money?
Not the.
Or not fully funded?
No, we still have a placeholder, we still have a placeholder.
Right.
We still have it in a placeholder, they had to put it in miscellaneous.
Yeah.
They had to put it, we put it in miscellaneous.
Somehow, I think, to me, it seems like a piece of this puzzle is whatever the rollover funds were identified as and whatever action we took, it would be very helpful to have that in front of us. Certainly, preferably at this meeting, and if not at this meeting, very next time we address the budget. So I have, Mayor, I have some questions, but probably Steve needs to be here.
Yeah, can, can.
He's, he's on his way.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, oh, I don't know, I guess, I went through the last budget, I mean, the last, whatever it is, printout of income and expenditures.
I think the one that was to the end of May.
What we have, that we had, so, and I have identified some questions that I had there. One item that I identified that can see right here on page one has been, no, has been corrected, unadmitted of the budget last year. Yeah, there's, there's a couple of items that, I, I don't know. So anyway, I had some questions based on the May printout of income and expenditures, and some of them go to an explanation of what we're spending for some pretty significant cost services. But I guess, could I kind of answer the city manager's question, Mayor, he said he doesn't know how we usually do them?
Sure.
Okay, good thing. Well, there's a number of ways to go through budget, and partly it depends on who's here in the commission and who's the staff. Usually, it's something that we would get more in advance, which I know there have been, people have had to be out. But as well, it helps, like I see things are in yellow here, if they're going up or down. It would be helpful to have an overview of, you know, an overview of how we're doing on our expenditure and where we're having to increase and where you folks decided to cut. That would be helpful to me, just so we can get a sense of it. And then, of course, at some point, I mean, ideally, this is really for my fellow commissioners. Ideally, the commission would want to set some priorities, we would want to line this up with our strategic plan kind of thing. So that's just, that's just my two comment.
Yeah, typically, what you would do, Derek, is as you go through this, and then eventually, we probably will end up going through these one by one.
Right.
And determining what needs to, what's essential and what's not essential. And it looks to me like this year is going to be an essential budget. And the non-essential, we're gonna have to set to the side for right now.
Okay.
Until next year. So that's what we would do, we would have, even at the various workshops, so that we would have on our general fund, our C R A, our better place, and then also on our, on their place funds.
Okay.
So we have them all.
I would like to add, and thank you for that, Commissioner DeVito, if you look at your spreadsheet there, the green column is gonna be what is budgeted in twenty six. Your over and under will be to the next, to the right of that, in yellow. So if it's in there, you'll see where it says dollar increase or decrease, the, the amount that you were decreasing are gonna be in red and, and, and parentheses. Anything in black is over.
Right.
What was the, from the year prior?
So red is.
I got that far, okay.
Yes, red is.
I got that far.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, there's no verbal roadmap for us. That kind of directs us to, we're over here, we're under there. And I have some questions that I wrote down. There are some significant overages from what was budgeted in the existing year expenditures. I'm not sure what all of them are for. And I have questions about, you know, how, how are we, why do we have these overages of what was budgeted? And how is, what are we gonna be lacking next year if we can't cut that? There are just some things in here that are, are not very clear.
Yes, ma'am.
In the existing, whatever. And just one item that I'm noting, and we have not really discussed the budget in the meeting. The, oh good, this has been changed, retirement for former commissioners, that's on page seven. We are already at like ninety two percent from the year because we did not budget for the retirement of commissioner banks. So it's only two thirds of what it needs to be, that's, well, there's a different item now. We're at ninety two percent because we're writing checks for six hundred a month, that's two hundred per commissioner, instead of four hundred. And then I see you have projected for the next year, it goes up to five thousand seven hundred. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's still right. Um, right, because that's what, I don't know, that kind of, wait, three, three, so is she on?
Um, Steve's here, so with Steve, Steve, do you have some, some paperwork to pass out? Did you, did you by chance bring the, the current, I know it doesn't have the milling funds in there, but did you bring the, the D D two fourteen?
Oh, the four twenty.
A four twenty, I know.
Steve's passing out this spreadsheet that was created, provided by the county for D R four twenty and the T I F as well. One of them shows the millage rate that we are proposing at eight point seven one six four. The other is the previous rollback and showing the millage rate at eight point five nine one four. And the rollback was at eight point four three, but this is, this is the document that was used last year.
Does Steve want to talk about this? Yes, Commissioner DeVito.
Does, does Steve come up and present?
Yes, true, yes, Steve.
Okay, so for you, there is two different millage calculations. The first one, we use the eight point five nine four, which is the millage rate two years ago, I believe, before we use a rollback rate. So what's that showing is that our total taxes at that, let me, proposed millage rate would be one million six six three eight twenty one. You back out the, the T I F, which would be one eight four five thirty one, so our adjusted current proceeds would be eight ninety nine one forty four, and that would be a sixteen thousand dollar difference over the rollback rate of last year, eight point four three zero percent. And then, so if we calculate that with the proposed millage rate of eight point seven one six four, we come up with one million ninety nine four forty two as the proposed taxes on the military. T I F would be one eight seven two sixteen, and the adjusted current year proceeds would be nine twelve two twenty six.
Now, he was showing, what were they showing that in order to get the, the amount that we had last year, what was that, what was that percentage that he was giving us?
The percentage of what we have to get to do, to get what we had last year.
To get, to get what we had last year.
Would be the eight point seven, um.
One, one six four.
Six four.
One six four.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And so that's where we would, that's where we would have to be in order to even get a little bit more last year.
That's correct.
So we would be raising the millage rate, it would still count as a rollback, but.
Correct.
We would be increasing the knowledge level.
Correct.
To get what we were last year.
Yes.
And I don't quite have a idea. We worked early in part here from eight point five seven four to eight point four three four mills, and I'm not really comfortable praising that. Can we make it work to eight point four three four? I don't think we want to go back down to the eight point four three four zero.
Which is not what it was last year.
Exactly. I think it's like taxpayers by now.
Well, we still have to operate and be able to provide services, I mean, adequate services. And so it's, you know, I mean, I think going into this last year, that was a concern that, you know, we were, you had to cut. How much did you, how many did you cut out of last year's?
Almost eight, eight thousand, I believe.
Seventy or eighty, I know, just, just even more so than what we thought.
Yes.
So.
What's the difference between eight point, the, the rollback rate in the, is that what this is here? The eight point seven one six four, which is what you calculated to be the rollback rate, and eight point four three four.
Uh, there is the twenty nine thousand dollars.
So twenty nine thousand dollars. And we don't raise the lowest taxes.
So I don't think that, Steve, what he's asking is if we keep the mileage where we did last year.
Yes.
And so if that's what you're saying, that would be the difference, would be the twenty one thousand five hundred fifty five dollars if you kept the mileage where we did last year?
Yeah.
That's not a difference.
That's the difference. The rollback rate, you're not counting the million and a half new valuations from there. Because there wasn't a million.
No, you don't, you don't take, you don't take that to, you have to back that out.
But then you do have, give the taxes from it. So with that new growth, it's only a difference of thirty thousand dollars to leave our whole taxes at the same rate. It's not like a, you don't have to think about it, it says it right here on the sheet.
Let's not be, let's not.
No, I'm just saying, everyone's saying, ooh. No, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to be the truth.
Well, they're trying, they're trying to, to figure this out too, so.
And I believe we tried to do less than the, the rollback rate last year, the department revenue, you know, they weren't.
That would, which is the rollback rate.
Yeah, originally, you, you tried to do less than, it calculated less than last year, it, you couldn't, we had, we had to, what we had calculated. It was just all, you know, it was just all amongst ourselves, but you had to go with the eight, we couldn't go below one of the, the D R four twenty, say, our, our, you know, the calculated rollback rate would be.
We can always go a little bit lower, but right now.
So I think what we need to do right now is we need to probably get into the budget, and we need to see if there's some areas in here that we can cut out.
Sure.
So that we can start doing some, some savings, if there's some things, Commissioner DeVito, she's got some concerns. I've shared with you some concerns in going over May's statement of revenue and expenditures. And to see where we can, and that's where we're gonna have to. Look at what we can, what we can back out and be able to live it.
Okay, um, may I, yes. So I think Commissioner Lori and I both had the same thought, because you're a moderate. Um, I could hear him muttering over there.
Mm-hmm.
He muttered.
Yes.
Okay, um, on page seven of the budget that was just put on our desk today. Um, yeah, page seven, where it says retirement for former commissioners, this is not the biggest item in the budget, but it's one that we have to pay and can't cut out, as far as I know. Um, so it's got the year-to-date actual for twenty twenty five at thirty eight hundred, I don't know if that is correct. Um, might be, but it says projected for twenty twenty five. Wait, budgeted for twenty twenty six? I don't, I don't unders- I don't understand that, budgeted twenty twenty six, it says forty eight hundred, but.
Yeah, that would be the budgeted amount we're proposing for the retirement.
Okay, I, that's your three rule. Where's that, did you?
Yeah.
I, I'm not very good at math, so if I've looked this up, I'm very crap, um, so as of last November, when Commissioner Banks um became retired, we had three commissioners um receiving two hundred dollars a month, correct? And our budget did not allow for that, the the budget that we set was four thousand eight hundred. Um, so we have three retired commissioners, that is now six hundred a month that we are writing those checks for.
Seventy two hundred dollars a year.
Right, so how can we, I don't, the green, the green column is what we're budgeting, is that right, whoo?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so if we have three retired commissioners, I don't see how we can budget forty eight hundred.
Well, we can actually fix that.
Right, but that's, I mean, every, uh, it seems like unfortunately, um, we are very scarce of funds, so every dollar counts. Um, and I don't know what that comes up to.
So that's seventy two hundred dollars.
Okay.
So that would be seventy two hundred dollars at six hundred dollars um a month.
Right, oh, fair, okay.
So you've got seventy two hundred dollars.
Right, so we have to allow for that.
So we have to allow for that, you know, our training, we went up on our training last year fifty, I think, oh, we might even for this year, um, all all the training, we might even have to forego all of us having any training next year. Um, if that's what we have to do, um, again, this is gonna, this is gonna be bare bones, it's gonna be painful, but we're gonna have to get through this. But she is right, we have to make sure that we account for, that's not, that's not a, that's not an option, that's not an optional one that we can cut.
Okay, and we actually did talk about that before this meeting, it was just something we didn't change for the paperwork for this meeting.
Okay.
Um, the mayor, speaking, you said, uh, we just have to get through this. Um, what, how is this going to affect us in subsequent years?
He said this is the last year that we're going, that, um, the property appraiser said this would be the last year for the refund from FPL with those, um, that it would happen to back last.
Because I mean, the bills are going up.
They'll go back up, it should go back up.
But they're.
It should be normal, it should be a normal.
So they'll go up towards now, or normal rates, so they're counting off of that, right?
Yes, they should. Should not.
Because there also is depreciation.
There's depreciation, McDonald's is gonna have depreciation, you know, there are new, there are new businesses opened up, um, so they'll enjoy the depreciation. But the depreciation should somewhat allow allow a little bit too.
So there should be normal growth, that's true.
Um, well, even if there is growth, your TDP, I think that's typically what you get from your businesses, they're the ones that claim the TDP.
Through down the seven million dollars this year.
Yeah.
From last year.
So, and Mayor or City Manager, I don't know whether to have a question, has property appraiser provided anything writing to the taxing entities and the public?
Nope.
So, well, well, the DR four twenties, what the year was.
Um, but how this all came about though, I mean, this has been somewhat of a surprise, um, is my personal feeling that we should be asking him for that explanation, um, I think, I certainly would like to have a more clear explanation, and I would think property owners might as well.
You can ask him to come, um, present at one of our meetings, that's always an option, to ask him to come present at the meeting or at the workshop. He could come to the August meeting, we would ask him if he could, he'd have to bring Justin with him, probably. Um, I know the county, both the county, um, the chairman for the county commission and the chairman for the school district, for the school board, they both asked for a meeting with him on this, um, and there was a letter out there that that he was not able to meet with them, um. So I don't know if you can ask him for a written explanation now that it's out there.
Yeah.
Um, it, you know.
Totally.
Uh, I, my understanding is there's not a written agreement, but again, that's, you know, just from what I've been speaking to those in the county, there's not a written agreement with FPL for that, um, you know. But that was an agreement that the property appraiser's office made with FPL. So right there, um, in that one, you've got twenty four hundred dollars that you're gonna have to add into that budget, um, for the city commission, on the city commission budget.
And we have, are there any numbers yet from FMT for insurance?
We have not received anything yet, um, at this moment.
And so what are you using here for calculations?
Last year's budget.
But we know that's gotta go up. Insurance goes up every year.
We have not, uh, actually shot that in ten years, and we.
Well, our property and liability stuff, three FMT is gonna be the best deal. No problem, no, I'm just not bad about that, I mean, we can shop it, but that's kind of the reason that the cities exist. Is it's the first step, you know, self-insure each other. I don't think it's gonna be any lower if you go to the commercial market, um, but they do, it has been increasing every year twenty percent. I have insurance on that, that we need to figure out.
We're looking at all the above savings that we can do, currently, we do have a a a proposal, we have not received one, but we have been in conversations with Brown and Brown, who also services multiple municipalities, and we have a twenty-five percent um, cost savings that that they're proposing, they just have not given us the proposal because we haven't received FMTs yet.
So we, we, you know, is this keeping salaries level, with no raises, no increasing of costly?
Currently, right now, yes, sir.
Okay, because I mean, that's.
Well, today's five percent, it was back to eighty.
Right. Well, that's actually done every year for the past three years.
Correct.
And then we did seven and a half percent in the middle of this year.
Seven percent.
Seven percent.
Seven percent in the middle of this year and the and the five percent, but we talked about that earlier, so that's something the commission's gonna have to determine this year. And that happens in agencies, unfortunately, but we've worked hard to try to get our employees to a a competitive wage, um, so we could be competing with, you know, the other municipalities, but, um, this year, it might be that that's not, you know. Put a more toy on that, that's gonna be up to the commission. Did you? Um, Commissioner DeVito, did you wanna look at, did you wanna continue to look at this, or did you wanna talk about your questions from this?
Um.
I want to fill that up first.
Okay, I have some questions, and you said you can have some questions also.
I did, I have quite a few questions on this as well, so what you guys.
Okay, on the, on the, on the existing, the last.
From the May, yes, from the May, our expenditures, revenue expenditures from May.
Okay, all right.
And this was in the back of everyone's.
Oh, or your questions, did you write it down? There's someone, it's not down right here. Okay, go ahead, I thought you were saying they were in the back of our folder or something.
No, just.
Okay, let me see. Okay, um, well, and this is, unfortunately, this is key to the May budget, so that's what I'll have to be asking about. I don't know that I could find it, um, in the new version. Okay, um, first of all, I don't know, this is just observation, and I don't see it on here. Um, okay, it's not in the May version, um. You have put which positions are funded in which department, is that right?
Sure.
Okay, that's very helpful, um. Okay. Can I, can I come here, come here, just hang up, okay? Okay, in the vendor city hall for current budget year, this is the May printout, um, under other professional services, it was budgeted six thousand five hundred, and as of the end of May, we had expended eighty seven thousand dollars, which, um, that says three hundred and seventy-two percent of the budget is expended, in other words, almost four times the budget. Um, but it's, it's under city hall, it goes workers' comp computer, other professional services. Right, and it's, it's over, um, by sixty three thousand dollars, I don't know.
Sixty three hundred.
Sixty three thousand, it's sixty three.
And that's for Michael Burright, Michael Burright, um, was a ten nine nine guy, there, he was a contractor, he worked for the city, so that's where he said I was getting that P two.
Okay. Okay, so that was the, that was the interim city manager.
Yes, correct, Michael Burright.
Okay, so.
And plus, there's also the city manager search expenses in there too, so.
The city manager search expenses went into that line item?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, where did we pull the money from that we used to pay Mr. Burright?
That's offset by the salaries in the city, the city manager department, I think it's over by about seventy three thousand a year.
It's offset by the salary savings, but in the city managers.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right, so we didn't have that, um. Where, where in the existing budget or the existing printout, well, I don't see the staff budgets. Um, another question I had was, it wasn't clear to me from the May printout that the um city TIF was transferred from the city budget to.